Can we have roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Abrika.
Here.
Councilmember Moody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gochet.
Here.
Let the record reflect. Mayor Martinez and Councilmember Rutherford are absent this evening.
Thank you. So on the approval of the agenda, I'd like to recommend that we continue items. Nine B, C, and D until the March 4th meeting. Anyone?
Still on paperwork?
Continue those until the next meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Moody, second by Councilmember Abrika. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
At this time, we'd like to have public comment on any of the consent items. Anybody?
So we have a speaker, David Chang. Gives me a blank.
Do not demonize anybody. You have to work together. Hispanic and Afro have to work together on behalf of the young people. Young people need this land so that they can change their culture. Don't copy the communists and don't copy the capitalists. You need a new culture that people own their own job. You understand? But you have to give them the right. You deny them the right. The reason you deny them the right is because people want to make money out of this land. Obama said, "India, China, oh, these people come. Let me print sixty cents a green card. Get them here." They're worth at least quarter of a million dollars each one. It's a big money-making. When they come here, they survive because they are organized. We are not. Then they will come here and buy condo. What will happen? They will kick us out. I don't know what you do, okay? You have to think on behalf of the young people. Don't send them to jail. No more jail sending. Let them do their own small business, micro-business, nano-business, home-business. If you don't think like that, forget it. Singapore a piece of rock. It can become number-one nation in terms of education and everything else. A piece of rock! That's the model you need to do. Malaysia also is waking up. Now, we are in the middle of the best market and you don't know what to do. Even I talk like this twelve years already. Don't listen. You know, in Muslim world, this is infidel. Infidel, anybody can spit on you and beat you up. We should have a term like that in this country.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'd like to have approval of the consent calendar.
Well, through the chair, I would like to pull item 4F. Just had a couple of questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
Oh, I'm fine.
So can we get approval of the consent calendar minus item 4F?
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Moody, second by Councilmember Abrika on the consent calendar. So you have, you want to speak about 4F?
Oh, we're voting on the rest.
Are we going to vote on?
On the. All of them except.
All those in favor of the consent calendar minus item 4F?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Excuse me, through the chair. I have a request to speak on 4F.
Okay.
If you'd like to take that now.
If I could ask my questions, I mean, it's up to the chair.
Yes, if we could have Councilmember Abrika speak and then we'll have the.
Yeah, so I had just a couple of questions. Since it looks like the appointment of the interim chief of police requires city council approval, I, it seems to me that the copy of the contract should be here. I know that we got it, it's probably a previous discussion, but shouldn't that be part of the record that we're approving a contract with somebody? And so it seems to me that, but if it's not here, that we make sure we include it as part of the record?
Sorry. There's not a contract. There would be an offer letter. He's being appointed as a retired Newton as an employee, but not under contract. And if I remember correctly, the staff report talks about him being appointed at the highest level. And which class is it?
Where is that?
Did we add it?
Oh, in the resolution.
Oh, I thought it was added, but I guess it did not get added. And Harvick, could you? The plan was to appoint him at the class, at the highest level. Right. And do you recall exactly what that is? The plan is to appoint him at the highest class level.
Yeah, but I mean, I think for the record, we need to know. I personally want to know. You know, I think that, yes, so I mean, I would like to know what it is that we're approving. I think the contract that was extended previously did specify the money part per hour, I believe it was, or something. And so, you know, I just feel that for the, for the public record, we need to know, I need to know what it is that we're approving.
Well, if you like.
If, I mean, if those figures can be presented or.
Come back.
Yeah, we can continue this till later in the agenda and we can run up and get a copy and bring it back down to the council.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. I just said, so then I can wait for the other questions then.
So we will continue item 4F on the consent calendar till later in the meeting?
Should, through the chair, should we get a public comment?
Have public comment on it?
On this item, yes.
Bob Gomez, 402 East Keith Street, in Espalwato, thank God. I'm wondering how many more surprises we're going to have from the city manager regarding appointees and displacing city employees. Now, I have nothing against Mr., the current chief of police right now. And I read that he's well-qualified, but that's not my argument. My argument is knowing that Chief Rocha was almost on his last hours of his term. I don't believe that he should have been replaced. He should have kept on going, knowing that Chief Davidson knew about it the first time, then second time. The city manager also knew about it. And now all of a sudden, we got a new interim chief of police. And that was a surprise. I forgot that there's another one that was a surprise. So how many more surprises is the city manager going to give us before we are notified or the public's notified about this? Because myself, I would have liked to kept Chief Rocha on board here and, because he was a very, very good person, knew the community here, and the community also know, knew him. So like I said, I don't have nothing against the current chief of police, but nevertheless, I would like to kept Chief Rocha on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to, are there any special, is that another? Any special presentations? We move on to oral reports. Report out of closed session.
Closed session report, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is no closed session report.
Staff reports? Are there any staff?
Yeah, we've got a couple of reports this evening. I'm asking the John Doughty, our community development director, to provide some information.
Okay.
Sure, thank you. First, I'd like to just let the community know that there is a upcoming Newell Road, San Francisco Creek Bridge project community meeting. It's at the Palo Alto City Hall chambers. It's on February 27th at 7:00 PM. So that's important for Newell Road decision-making. The second item is a notice that we will be doing starting February 20th through the middle of March or so, some fairly significant road maintenance. And so there will be some periodic closures at Woodland Avenue between Newell Road and West Bay Shore Road. I think that should come as pleasant pain for residents there with new paving there, as well as there'll be some paving going on at Daphne Court and Daphne Way from Westeria Drive to the end. So just wanted to let you know that there is some work going to be going on. And so there'll be posted and times, but just to let you know that there is really good news, actually, I think, on the Woodland Avenue front with that project.
John, what's that, two weeks out?
That's two, well, starts the 20th, so we're starting this week through March 12th. So obviously, it's dependent upon weather. And if weather continues to cooperate, then that'll be soon with that. But starting Thursday. And on a final note, we just wanted to just give you a quick update. Two weekends ago, we had a, our first storm event of the year. I think we were well-prepared for that. The sandbag station was opened at 2277 University. Staff was there to help out. Staff monitored that weekend. And while the major rains went north and did not have significant impacts here, we were prepared. And I think overall, the community came together once again. And I think it was a great kind of tabletop exercise, to some extent, for the community to work forward and staff to work through since the December 23rd, 2012 incident. So that was a great opportunity. And so we're looking forward to hopefully actually seeing rain again and being prepared again. Thank you.
Thank you. This point, we'll have city council reports. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Abrika, would you like to start?
Just briefly, I did have an opportunity to attend the East Palo Alto Boxing Club event Sunday, not this Sunday, but the Sunday before. So that was a very nice event. I had her leave a little early, but definitely, I thought it was very well-done and wish her the best of luck. The, well, our mayor is not here, but on the, on April 19th, which is Earth Day, there's some, a couple of networks of organizations that are working to do a kind of an all-volunteer day. And I've spoken with her since I had met with some people a few months ago. And so I just want to report that, that at some point, I think both Mayor Martinez and I will make a little presentation as some ways in which the city may be involved with these different, and it's open, but you know, just want to project into April 19th. I think that's, well, the other thing I was just going to mention, I know we're not going to discuss the item on the budget, the mid-year budget, but I do want to say that in conjunction with that, I know that we're having at least the last message I had. We are doing a follow-up retreat on March 5th. Is that still on? That's still on?
March 4th.
March 5th.
Wednesday, March 5th, 8 to 12.
That's the retreat time. That's what I had. But anyway, just based on our previous discussion, that we'll have a chance to continue the discussion on the core service or services, but also with additional financial information as far as what the status is of the, all the different funds and just kind of where we are. So I, I would invite, I just personally, I think that it's an opportunity for the public to let us know of any suggestions or concerns they have about the, sort of the big picture. One that comes to mind is that the rent board, when they made their presentation back in November, I think it was, they did mention some of their concerns they had around their, since the rent administration money comes directly from the tenants and landlords, it has its own budget. And they did have some concerns about the administrative costs. But anyway, I would just encourage the rent board to let us know what their concerns are, since we'll have the first look at the big picture, you might say. So anyway, that's, those are my reports. Thank you.
Councilmember Moody?
Okay, I have a little more than three. But first, but first, I want to start off with saying kudos to John Doughty and his team and to the city manager for having the community in a good place when the rains came. I think there was a sense of calm throughout the city, certainty that we have done our due diligence and that, let the rain come. We were ready for it. And I thought that was a, it was good to see the community relax in that, in that setting, knowing that families wouldn't be displaced, that we've done a good work in just a short period of time. Also, so I want to extend some kudos to Reverend Floyd Purdy of Faith Missionary Church for hosting a luncheon discussion with about 35 members of the faith community, to really to encourage them and to discuss ways which the churches can get more involved in civic government. I provided an update on many of the issues facing the council and also offered ways in which the church can increase their participation. Our interim chief at that time, Chief Byleddy, was in attendance and was welcomed by the group. Also, kudos to County Supervisor Warren Slocum, Dr. Fay McNair-Knox, and Beverly Beasley-Johnson for keeping the agenda of the San Mateo County and EPA Community Partnership moving. You know, there's a lot of people feared that because former supervisor Rose Gibson was termed out and Beverly Beasley was retiring from HSA, that the county would pull away from East Palo Alto. Yet it seems to me that the beat goes on. They've been meeting pretty regularly. They have a couple of initiatives on the agenda for the next couple of months. The East Palo Alto Crime Reduction Task Force Conference is forthcoming, Summer Employment Program, discussions are being had, and the Youth Empowerment Strategic Workshops are all being planned. And they've really created more room at the table for discussion. And I'm really pleased to see that this effort continues and that the legacy that Rose Jacob Gibson has created between East Palo Alto and the county continues. Also want to say, to celebrate Black History Month at the East Palo Alto YMCA this Friday from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, the Backyard Gardens Collective Roots Group will be hosting a Soul Food Junkies movie, a great movie about soul food, health, and wellness. Then they're going to put help, they're going to allow the participants to prepare some healthy food together. And you can take home a soul food cookbook. And that's at seven, from 5:30 to 7:30 Friday at the East Palo Alto YMCA at 550 Bell Street. Also, I am carrying a message for Father Larry Goodie of St. Francis of Assisi's Church. On March 8th, they will be hosting a prayer walk for peace and EPA to the location of our most recent tragedy, Dunbarton and Bell Street. And it's sponsored by the Restorative Justice Ministry of St. Francis of Assisi's Church, invited our church members, survivors of violence, and community leaders. The march begins at 9:00 AM Saturday, March 8th. Okay, and on a final note, once again, kudos to Menlo Park Mayor Ray Mueller for promoting a collaborative for two communities that could net the Ravenswood School District over $2 million. The project stems around each city hosting an electronic billboard, and the revenue generated will go to the district, which serve both communities with K through 8 education. Now, this is not a slam dunk. There's nothing agreed upon. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of conversations, and I'm certain that the city manager is going to be present at the table. But one of the things, and I think Vice Mayor can also, can attest to this, when we came on board, we were very intentional about building better relationships with our partner cities, Palo Alto and Menlo Park. And she and I both, and Ruben Abrika, have participated in some joint efforts in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club. But most importantly, we're having a lot of dialogue, and we're thinking about our, both of our communities and the needs therein. And so for him to step up as the mayor and to offer this as an opportunity to support our young people in the community, I'm just so happy, glad, and totally on board. Like I said, it's not a slam dunk. There's going to be a lot of conversations. But I think it's great for us to demonstrate that we are better together and that across the aisles, we are beginning having conversations. John Doughty talked about the importance of us being noticed on the meeting in Palo Alto about the Newell Bridge that's coming up and to encourage the community of East Palo Alto to have input in that area. So these are the types of things I think this council is bringing to the table, and we're expanding our reach. And I think it's all for the good. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. So for me, I have, I just want to thank Ebony Black for hosting a Black History program for our community this past Saturday at the Women's Club, at which point, not only did she just share with the children our, the Black History, she also acknowledged and recognized some of the leaders and some of the business owners that have been in our community for a very long time. So kudos out to Ebony Black. Also, on this coming Saturday, the Mid-Pen will be hosting a Black History program at Cooley Landing from 1:00 to 3:00. I have an opportunity to read to children this coming Saturday from 10:30 to 11:30 right here at our library. Looking forward to that. Also wanted to announce the Dominic Hoskins Black History Museum and Learning Center that's located at 190 Independence Street in Menlo Park from February 8th to the 28th. If you can get by and see that, this museum, it is something to witness. Is there anything else?
I got one more.
No, you go ahead. You go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. On the 28th, right here in this room, from 2:30 to 5:00 PM, the Sixth Annual Black History Month Summit, sponsored by the African-American Community Initiative of San Mateo County, will be here in honor of Nelson Mandela. And it's open to the public from 2:30 to 5:00 PM, and that's on February the 28th.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to go into community forum. Just want to remind everyone that the, there's two-minute limit on the forum talks. Who's our first speaker?
Ms. Guruchvakeel.
I'm sorry, what's her name again?
Would you like me to spell it?
No, that's you. I'm sure it's you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel. My name is Guruchvakeel, and I live on Woodland Avenue. It's a quiet corner of the city, very woodsy, and I love it. But sometimes I feel forgotten at that end. So I was very, very pleased when the street is going to be paved. It's in pretty bad shape, and I jog there at night, and I have to stop jogging when I come on that street because of the potholes. So I just wanted to say on a positive note that I really appreciate the city working on that street, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Chang, followed by Bernardo Huerta.
East Palo Alto only have $1 million every year, our budget. Pothole, whatever thing, cannot be done. Wake up.
These are all responsible for this condition because we send our young people to jail. Don't give them a chance to use the market to change the culture. Horrible, really is a horrible story in my, every year, I look at talking the same thing. Unbelievably. You know why? Because you are in an organized group. So to survive, you are follow other people's route, how to survive. But you don't give young people a chance. You should text the developer, use that money, and create working space for them, just like in other countries, Asia, even Uganda. Obama said, "Wow, how come these people are so smart?" That means we are, how come we are so stupid? Obama said that, "I listen everything. I look at reality." And you don't listen. That's the problem. I don't blame you. It's not a blame game. Because people want to make money. Everybody want to make money. Everybody play the money game. Selling drugs, stealing cars, it's all because of money. Forget about, this one police, they shoulder our police cost. We're going to use our policemen to get our Major C money? Let the young people create jobs. Use our church parking lot. There are 53 parking lot empty. It's insane. No country can be like this and survive. And that's why we don't survive. East Palo Alto, East Menlo Park, East Oakland, East San Jose, Barrejo, it's all the same car, same story.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Thank you.
Don't thank me. Start thinking about our problem.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bernardo Huerta.
Bernardo Huerta, 2124 Cooley Avenue here in East Palo Alto. As you know, I've been helping PIA, advising them, trying to make the garage conversions, secondary unit ordinance and stuff. But I don't know if you've contacted them lately, but they're very upset, and they really don't want this to go any further. What was presented before the planning commission on the 27th of last month was unbelievable. Four commissioners asked to separate garage conversions from secondary units. John Doughty just told them, "No." And it just, and lambasted them. I'm glad I'm not a planning commissioner anymore because I wouldn't have took that. He had, the commissioners asked to separate the setbacks. He wants, John Doughty wants three and six-foot setbacks for all residential here in East Palo Alto. And the PIA was looking for only for secondary units. And that would be an application maybe once a year or not even. You know, when I was on a planning commission, only like one a year would come on for secondary units. So this would make setbacks for all new developments in the future. And that's putting PIA against the entire community. So we're, this is not going to go forward. The people don't want it. What he's given us is junk. If you get that, the file or the paperwork that was shown for the planning commission and take it to any other planner and say, "Where are we going from, from this paperwork to garage conversion, the secondary units on this material?", you'll lose them. I'm telling you, material's real bad. And we want out. We want to take more time. We need to know about the cost and all. But this is not good. Compare that paperwork and take that paperwork to anybody else, and they'll tell you that's a planner, and you'll see that you have a reason to fire him.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bob Gomez.
Bob Gomez, 402 East Keith Street, beautiful East Palo Alto, thank God. Understanding about houses and that, we need to get, see what the other party's going to be doing for our people here because the people here in East Palo Alto are not very happy, especially the ones that are running apartments in West, East Palo Alto. And we're scared. We don't know if we're coming or going sometimes because we haven't been told what the plans are or what are, what are they going to do with us that are running in this community. So I wish maybe we could get some feedback from, from you all regarding what Woodland is going to be doing. Are they going to kick us out or they're going to remodel or what? But it would be nice to know. But it would be nice to know what, how we stand here in the community of East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all your speakers.
Right, at this time, should we go back to item?
4F.
4F, from the consent calendar?
If I could just note that this has not yet been delivered or distributed to him. Him being Lee Violet.
Thank you.
Through the, well, so what does that mean? To the same, what, in other words, I mean, we're approving an appointment, you said that he hasn't, he doesn't know about this, or?
No, he will not receive this letter unless you approve the appointment.
Well, okay, well, all right, well, that makes sense. So we're approving it, and then he'll receive this. Just another, and that's all we need at this point, then? Since you said that we don't need a contract, we don't need to approve a contract, this sufficient is a letter of employment?
If the council wants, they, you could offer an amendment to the resolution that would memorialize the rate within the resolution. You could add something saying the hourly rate of $84 and 84.8184, which represents Step E of the compensation schedule for this classification is hereby approved. If you wanted to make that a formal part of the council's action, you could go ahead and include that in the resolution.
So another question I had, just for purposes of just knowing, so since it looks that then, his appointment was basically, his original appointment was voided, or he could not continue, it seems here. So who's in charge of the police department, or how?
Yes, Captain John Cook is acting chief.
Okay. And that doesn't require any?
As opposed to interim appointment chief, so he's acting chief, which is customary responsibility for a captain when a chief is absent on a short-term basis.
All right, okay, so. And that doesn't require, I assume doesn't require any action from the council since it's?
No, council action under 21221, Government Code Section 21221 is only required for certain positions, one of which is listed in the CalPERS memos as being chief of police.
All right, thank you. The other question I had was, it appears then that there already has been a public posting as required by the government code. There's been a posting already announcing the permanent position for chief, because that's a requirement, is I understand?
That is correct.
And when did that happen, or?
Last Thursday.
So, you know, in relation to that, I do think it's important for the council to receive as soon as possible some outline as to the process with, it doesn't have to be definitive, but what are we doing in this search for a permanent chief? And what timeline is there? Because it already has started, and now basically we have been by law forced to begin that process. And so I understand that that was gonna come at some point. Well, now that it's started, I feel it is important to have that before us. I think there's one part of it that the council needs to be involved in the discussions, is to how the involvement of the city council and the community, how will that take place? So I'm not asking for that now, but I just want to know, is that something that we'll have at the next meeting, or when? I just, yeah, I.
So, we have released a request for proposals for an executive search form, and one of the things that's included in, that they must address in their proposal, is both the community process and involvement of the city council. So they are going to be submitting their proposals no later than March 3rd, and then in their proposal, they will actually outline exactly the schedule that they would be following for your involvement, the community's involvement, et cetera. So right now, we, the only true timeline that we have is the March 3rd deadline for the proposals.
Yeah, I guess what I was looking for, just what you're saying now, is an outline that says, you know, the posting takes place on this, the staff is advertising for proposals, the proposals will come in. I think we gotta have some estimated deadlines, or even if they change, but that's what I'm looking for. And I understand that once somebody's hired, that we'll get into the details of how that's gonna happen, but I just feel like, you know, when people ask me out on the street, what's going? I'm with that, I just feel, I don't know, you know, it's kind of frustrating, so I just, I'm asking for at least even an outline of what you're saying, what we just finished saying now, plus other things, and then, you know, we'll have an idea, kind of a ballpark idea of what we're talking about, and then as we find out more, we can do that, so.
We would be happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
So do we need to approve?
Yes.
That item now? Do you want somebody to?
I make a motion that we approve item 4F, as stated by the.
So I would second it with the addition that the city attorney made, because I think it's important for it to be part of the public record in the resolution.
In terms of the?
Of the pay. Of the pay schedule is the problem of the contract.
It's been moved by Councilmember Moody, second by Councilmember Abrica. And we approved item 4F of the consent calendar. All those in favor of this improvement?
Aye.
Aye. It's been approved.
All right, happy hunting for you.
We don't have any public hearings. The next item will be policy and actions. We have a report on our city water system.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, acting as mayor, and council members, pleased to be here tonight. John Doughty, Community Development Director. With me is Randy Jones, who is with American Water Enterprises, and we would like to just walk you through some additional kind of updates on the East Palo Alto water system, and then obviously, at the end, provide an opportunity for question and answer time as well. As you are well aware, we have been to this council on a number of occasions to discuss the water system and water components, supply, the distribution system, and a variety of other times through the capital improvements program. This is an opportunity to talk a little more about the operations side of the system, as well as to give you some updates on, on just some distribution system issues that are sort of emerging at this point. So, by way of background, again, there is a city-owned water system. It serves about 80% of the properties in the city and includes both east and west side of Highway 101. It is operated by American Water Enterprises under a 25-year lease agreement with the city. The city is responsible for monitoring operations and ensuring contract compliance for that agreement with American Water Enterprises. And if you recall, earlier last year, we had an initial proposal for a request for rate relief from American Water. We were successful in working through some issues with American Water Enterprises, and ultimately, they withdrew that request. But out of that process, staff did initiate a couple of analysis, reviews, evaluations, whatever you wanna call them, to look at just the operations side, and part of this conversation is just to give you a little bit of an update on what those reviews turned up. Those are included and attached to this staff report, so we're not gonna go into great detail, but we can certainly answer questions as it relates to those. So the financial review was conducted by a CPA firm. They found just four notable findings, which were ultimately incorporated into the AWE financial statements. So there was not a significant issue, I mean, it was, they were significant enough to warrant being addressed within the financial statements, but they have been addressed. There were no accounting irregularities or anything with that. The system and the billing systems seem to be working quite well, and as noted here, AWE was cooperative and provided timely information for that, so we appreciated that. That again is attached, that report is attached to this package. We also contracted with Kennedy Jinx, which is a locally-based engineering consultant firm, and their primary task was to just look at the operation and management of the water system for the last five years to give a context and a window there with that. Again, they found no significant irregularities in operations of the system or anything, but they did note some useful observations about how the city and AWE could collaborate a bit more, and how AWE could modify operations somewhat to address issues such as putting leaks on the GIS, geographic information system maps, sharing that information and allowing us to put that, those are kind of ways that we can improve things. And again, AWE was very cooperative and provided timely response to this. Tonight, you received a copy of a letter from American Water. That letter just outlined some of their responses and issues, concerns a little bit about the operations analysis primarily. We are working through those issues, that was not the idea to have a detailed conversation about those issues. We feel very, very confident that we're gonna be working through most, if not all, of those issues, but we wanted to provide that copy to you so you could see what their issues and concerns were relative to the operations analysis. And again, what they found was that our big surprise that we are not funding the CIP, the capital component, to the extent that other agencies are funding theirs through the rate structure. And as has been noted consistently, the system is undersized and in need of significant replacement and repair and work with that. And there are other issues there. One issue and area that we'll talk a little bit more about is that the account, the unaccounted water loss for 2012, 13 was above 18%, which was a very high number for the system, and that means there was about 18% of the water that had no place to be billed to with it, and that's a concern. So we're trying to evaluate and determine whether that was really an aberration, or whether that is more the norm. We know we had significant breaks in lines during that year, so we're just trying to figure out where that comes, and we're looking at prospectively, in this coming fiscal year, calendar year, what it looks like in terms of those losses. So on an average basis, the water loss is well within industry standards, but for that one year, there was a significant spike in that, and that is of concern to all. And again, less than 2% of our total revenues collected goes to system upgrades, so that's a significant underfunding of your capital reserve fund. So this is something that we've talked about, and I won't spend a great deal of time, but remind you that in the community that we have significant deficiencies in our water distribution system, and that accounts for just the distribution system of about $32 million in need for replacement of pipelines. We have inadequate pipe sizing, so about 69% of our pipes are, they're aged and many in need of repair, but they're not even of the right size to meet fire protection, fire flow requirements. And then overall, the pipes are reaching, or have reached their lifespan time there with that in the ground for more than 40 to 50 years, and with the conditions of the soil we have here, we have significant issues kind of as a result of that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Randy to talk a little bit about these items which they've identified for us, so he can walk through, and then we can finish up with some other information.
First, I appreciate you allowing me to come here tonight, and I do appreciate that. And working with John and the rest of your staff, we wanted to try to determine one of the real reasons of why so much water loss. So we did some benchmarking against standards throughout the United States and the East Palo Alto system. So we broke it down into three major components that the American Water Works Association uses as standards. So, water loss as a percentage, you know, as how much we really buy by how much we really sell, and it's real losses and apparent losses. Apparent losses are things like fire protection, when we have to repair a line, et cetera. Real losses are how much the meters are in and how much the meters are out. It can be counted, right? And apparent losses are open. And then, water distribution, you know, we wanted to figure out how much you were losing per mile. That's an industry standard. How much, are you losing more than typical system of your size, or less, or what that would be? And then, your breakage rates. That's, we've seen a significant increase over the last five years in particular, and I can show you some charts that I think would give you a better picture of their overall system. The first chart shows that you've averaged over the last 12 years 10.4% water loss, which industry standards back in 2001 were 10%, and now they've changed to 9%. So you're not that far off as a whole, but if you look, it fluctuates, correct? I mean, and if you look particularly at the end, what it's done in the last few years. Much of your system, or parts of your system, were put in the 40s and 50s. Some of it is galvanized pipe. Galvanized pipe has a useful life of 40 years, so the city's been very fortunate that it's already expended its useful life. And some of the conditions in the brakes are come from that pipe. Two-inch pipe, because of scaling, may only be down the size of a nickel at this point. So that's just, the material we use today compared to what they used in the 40s and 50s is significantly different to prevent that. The next slide, this shows you that on average, for a system of your size, you're actually just a hair below industry standards on how much water you use or lose per mile of system. But again, it's the last few years that show the real picture. And the last, this next slide, do you have it? There it is. Really shows the real picture, and we took a seven-year average, the last seven years, and you've increased in breakage, broken lines by 300%. So the increase from your average, the last seven-year average, you've increased 300% because of the useful life of the material is way past its, way past what it was designed for.
So to end, we want to talk just briefly about a few sort of emerging issues, and certainly, the top two are things that are clearly in everybody's mind, which is, one is the wholesale water rate increase, which we know is coming in April, May, from SFQC. That is in the realm of 30 to 32% or so on the wholesale side, so that is a significant adjustment that's going to have to be absorbed within the system. adjustment that's going to have to be absorbed within the system. Clearly, we got a little bit of rain, but that rain is not answering the overall water shortage we have across the state and hesitantly even used the word drought in that mix. We have, with cooperation of AWE, have put mailers in the upcoming buildings that are going out, so, and that's what AWE has done to get, to ask for voluntary conservation from parties, and we'll work forward on other sides. And then we've talked a little bit about the water loss and water loss reduction. So again, the wholesale side, there's not a lot that we can do. This is, these adjustments are coming, they're likely to come annually for some time, and they are to pay for all of the seismic upgrades that are occurring all along the Hetch-Echi water system. And these are, you know, paying bonds, loans back that are obligated to be paid back, and these are not going to stop coming. And again, we're looking at somewhere around 32% in the wholesale water rate coming in Governor Brown did declare severe water shortage. Basically, what all that did was to at least put folks on alert that we need to be looking at voluntary conservation. Obviously, some agencies have gone even further than that due to very, very limited amounts of water in their storage capacity at this point. Again, we, AWE is putting out information into the buildings, and we are waiting for an April decision by the SFPUC on whether we go to mandatory restrictions and reductions in the meantime. Water loss reduction, one of the things we've talked about a little bit, is not only the loss of water that's going out from leaks and breaks, but also from the fact that our meters in the system are also beyond their useful life cycle as well. Typically, meters are being replaced every 10 years or so, seven to 10 years. We're in the 25- to 30-year point on the meters. The meters aren't as effective and as accurate over time, and therefore, the actual billable and billing rates are not exactly where they probably should be across a wide section of the city. And so we're working on and developing a program to address that issue, to try to find a cost-effective way to address meter replacement. And so that's something that's very critical over the next few months. And finally, questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
I do. First of all, let me just say to Mr. Nathan and his team from American Water, we appreciate your partnership in all of this and your support of this community for a number of years. And what took place last month, I think, was very indicative of a willingness on both parties to try to come to some solution and kind of work together on what's inevitable. You know, we got to get these pipes fixed, and cost of water is going up. So John, I have a couple of questions for you, or actually, might be for Mr. Nathan as well. Does American Water have a rate for families or individuals on fixed incomes as we begin looking at this water rate increase that's probably inevitable?
The water system, basically because of state law mandates, requires that everyone share equally in the cost based on their usage and based on the meter size. So that's, it's not a program that's been developed, unlike where PG&E operates under the Public Utilities Commission, and they've developed a whole program around assisting folks. The local water systems have not been designed around that, and you have a significant challenge. Really, the only way that you could subsidize is to have to use general fund dollars to subsidize because you could not use water fund monies to do so.
Oh, really? Okay, so our senior population would not be, they would have to participate in this rate increase as well?
Yes.
Unless the city subsidizes?
Correct.
All right. So aside from the rate increases, which are inevitable, I mean, what are the other considerations or discussions that you are having to try to identify the $32 million needed to get the system up and running?
Well, tonight, you took a major step in what we would think in the right direction, which was to authorize us to enter into a contract with a firm to prepare the water rate study. And that water rate study and analysis will look at many factors, but primarily to look at the next five to 10 years out in terms of trying to build a capital reserve fund and include capital funding within the rate structure itself. And that's part of the way to get to 32 million. Clearly, we have been continuing to work with partners in Sacramento, looking at grant funds, looking at low-interest, no-interest loans, the infrastructure bank. And Mr. Brown is constantly in Washington, DC, looking for money and looking for ways to try to address that. Again, there's an infrastructure bank opportunity potentially in that regard and also grant funding, but it's a significant issue to try to address. One of the biggest challenges is that it's not going to be easy to bond for this because the rate structure itself is pretty limited in terms of what capacity there is for that revenue to be pledged. So, but that's part of the strategies that we're going to look at and ask the consultant to look at as part of the rate structure as well, is to tell us what options exist in terms of funding this gap.
Well, will our ability to develop our own wells have any impact on the need to redo the infrastructure of the pipes or to be able to help with the water distribution? What are going to be some of the benefits, I guess, of our well systems?
Unfortunately, the wells that we're looking at are the supply side, and those will provide us ways to address shortfall in the event that we do have drought conditions applied and we have reductions required at the Hetch-Echi turnout. That's one area where that benefits us. The other side of it is, right now, as the council's aware of, through 2019, we have insufficient allocation of Hetch-Echi water to meet growing demand and growth opportunities, both residential and commercial industrial. So those wells will help meet and fill that gap as well while we still look at other ways, and hopefully in 2019 renegotiating the allocation that we have from Hetch-Echi. But again, that's the supply side. These will have little to no impact, beneficial impact to the pipeline issues and the pipe deterioration that we have, unfortunately.
Okay. I think this might be my last question. So you talked about in your presentation, the majority of the water meters in the city are, you know, aged, 25 to 30 years. My question is, how many meters do we need to replace, and what's the anticipated cost of those meters? And will that cost be shared with American Water, or does the city have to foot the whole bill?
There was about 38, it's about 3,800 customers, and each one of those customers pretty much have a meter, some of varying sizes. We're still working through the dollar side of this issue. Let me give you, for instance, a three, a typical kind of three-quarter inch meter, which is your typical service for a, for a single-family home. When you're buying in bulk and you're buying as a group in a large grouping, that we would be looking at, and that is going to be at least a half to a third the cost of what you would be looking at if you were buying it individually. So probably a savings somewhere from roughly maybe $300 to $400 purchase price of what you would get on an individual basis upwards of $600 to $800. So that's what we're trying to build in, this is an economy of scale, and also look at over a period of time doing this. So we're not looking at this over one-year period. But the, when, we're going to be looking at this as a potential surcharge on the rate structure itself and also some assistance through the general fund potentially in that. So we're going to be coming back and talking about this in far greater detail, so, but there is not an insignificant cost associated with this effort.
Is American Water participating in the, in the cost of these meters at any level?
American Water has been working with us and has indicated a willingness to work with us on this program and deal with it. Certainly, part of the issue that they offer is the ability to buy in bulk and buy at significant reduced cost because they buy a lot of these and they have relationships. And so I think there's, they also have an intimate working knowledge of what the cost of actually installation and all the kind of issues that could come up about that. So it's a collaborative effort. It's not just the city working on that, it'll be American Water Enterprises working with us.
Okay. This is my last question. So you made a comment that the pipes are, really are too small to pass code for the fire department, and that we need to really upgrade our piping system so we can create more water pressure in there that will satisfy the fire department. What impact does that have on our ability to attract or to identify development?
So let me just say this there on the pipe sizing, and jump in anytime you want, Randy. There are two issues. One, there was the original pipe size, which in most instances, 69% of the pipes were, are sized less than what you would have required now. Now, at the time they were built, they were meeting standard.
Forty years ago, they were fine.
So, so that was an issue, but today, they wouldn't meet standard. But the problem we have occurring is that you have corrosion and a lot of hard water deposit within those pipes, the galvanized pipe. And so even what was, and what is basically an undersized pipe is way undersized, as indicated by Randy. They're seeing, you know, the size of a nickel where it's a two-and-a-half inch pipe, but what's actually being conveyed through there is the size of a nickel because of all the buildup within the pipe itself. And so that's creating issues and challenges in providing fire flow and fire services. So the long way around to that is that that affects your insurance rating, it affects how your fire department's able to handle issues, and those are things that folks look at. They look at what their cost is going to be for insurance. Their assurance is that they're not going to have their structures burned down, that they're not going to have their equipment ruined because they couldn't get adequate fire service to that. So those are things that are looked at. Now, I don't know that we're at that point of that being the issue and reason why anything is occurring, but it is a factor in decision-making that goes on, and that is part of that insurance rating system.
If I could just add, we will bring back an economic development implementation plan as requested, but it will say, sort of, step one is dealing with the infrastructure.
Right.
So this is economic development. So in order to get to the point of what we consider traditional economic development in terms of the marketing and trying to go out and attract businesses, this has to be done first before we can get to that stage.
Right. Okay.
Standards in the industry for fire protection have changed. In 1940, you only had to have 80% of your average flow through a pipe. Today, it's over 200. So as we learn over the years, standards change, so you can see where, and where you would have a two-inch pipe, today you would have to have a six-inch pipe.
Yeah, and I think it creates benefit for the community to have these discussions because, you know, no one goes home at night thinking about pipes and the impact it has on our economic development strategy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did have a few questions. Yeah, so in summary, we have this financial kind of study and this operations study that were done. And then, as you make references to the condition of the pipes, so was there a report done on that some time ago, or have we, in other words, is there some document that has all the information on the existing configuration and problems with the pipes?
Yes, that's the 2010 Waters, Water Master Plan.
So that was part of that big study?
I borrowed a couple of pieces from a previous report, and I apologize, that had the reference to the 2010 Water Master Plan, so it should have continued the reference.
Right. So then, on the, on the issue of the breakage, that it does seem very dramatic increase the last few years. So given that we have that information, is there like a, some backup emergency plan? Is it possible to at least repair parts that could help? Or is this one of those where, you know, it's all or nothing, that unless we have all this money, that we're not going to get to it? Or is it possible to identify some areas that could be done, you know, soon and maybe help in the overall system or?
So, so Mr. Nathan has been kind enough, in American Water Enterprises, to identify the, sort of what they call the six hotspots.
Right.
And those are being looked at, and we're looking at having actually, coming back with a contract for design work on those. We have some money set aside for water main projects in this, in this current CIP. We're looking to move forward with some of that work. And so we realize that there are five to six areas where we're having significant, significantly more issues, and we need to address and fix those. So it's not an all or nothing. We need to address these to the best we can, but there is a significant, big need. We can address these hot areas and significant areas, and we're looking to do that this spring.
Okay, good. Because I think it is, it is a danger. On the other hand, I think the public would like to know, if we know, then what are we doing? So that was my, really my question. So it sounds like we know where the hotspots are, and then we'll be able to do something to help while we're working on the overall system.
And AWE has mapped those, we can certainly share those, but we will come back, as I said, in the next, within the next month with a contract proposal for design work, and then that will lead into actual construction work.
Yeah. And so when you mentioned the money, is that, since the city does collect some money from the utility tax, is that correct? Or how does that work?
That, what you, you set aside one-time capital, capital dollars in this current fiscal year, CIP, and that's what we're looking to use, somewhere a little over $300,000, if I recall, for that purpose.
But, yeah, okay, so aside from that, the general fund, on your report, we receive a franchise fee, utility tax revenues of 5% for water services collected by AWE.
Those are purely, those, those funds purely go to the general fund, and how you allocate the general fund is then is your job.
No, my question was, how are we using those? So we collect some money right now from the water, how are we using that money? I mean, maybe you don't know, but I'm just asking that question to...
Within the general fund.
Because it's in the general fund, so, you know.
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes, so, yes, so the general fund collects utility users' tax for water and also franchise fees. Those are actual general-purpose revenues that are used to pay for things like public safety, community development, administrative...
Okay, good. Well, but theoretically, then, those could be used for the system in some ways. I mean, it's up to the council to decide how.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So I'm just trying to flag some of these because, you know, I do understand that it's going to take millions and millions of dollars to have everything. On the other hand, anything that we can do in between, I think, okay, so that was that. And then, you know, since you did give us this letter, but it's hard to read it quickly, but, and I know that, and definitely, I think the staff has done a great job of digging into this all to very detail back and forth, and then working with American Water. And so they responded to some areas where maybe they had disagreements or whatever, but could you just quickly summarize the gist of it? It seems like more, you were saying, most things you feel like they can be worked through, but is there any area that you feel is going to be more, I don't want to say contentious, but... but just so that we know, I think I had to tell you, there's some areas that we need to spend more time on or?
We really sort of looked at the letter simply as a, as, as we agree to disagree a bit on the language and how, how Kennedy Jinx may have stated something really more than, than substantive issues. We, we are working forward on, on virtually all the aspects of, of changing the rate structure, how we, how we address the issue of wholesale versus the retail rate for water, all of these issues. So, we really don't see this as being really substantive in, in any way and really not an issue. We, you know, it was one of those where, you know, we should provide it, we needed to provide it. It's, it's something that the, the public deserves the opportunity to look at, but is there anything that critical in it? No, there really isn't.
Because it, under one in your financial review, it said that there was no detailed documentation beyond the allocation schedule provided by American Water. So, am I to read that one, they just didn't get around to doing that or were they refusing to give us that documentation or is that just something that? Because when I see statements like that, you know, I kind of wonder if, and, you know, do we need that information and is it coming or is that?
So, I, I believe this refers to the management fee and I think Randy can probably speak a little bit more to it. The, the way it works is that American Water has a corporate structure. They actually do their billing out at the corporate structure to allocate some staff time for the purposes of servicing this account. So, there's really the corporate supportive, I may, and there's no specific formula per se. It's really based on the number of people are servicing, number of accounts that you have and based on the size and complexity of the accounts. So, that, that's how American Water does the allocation.
We allocate it that way to be fair. If we, if we build it on a billable per hour, the rate would be much higher for the city. So, we try to allocate it to be just and fair. So, that's, that's why it's allocated that way.
Yeah.
And if we really charge by the rate, by the hour, or are going to negotiate, it would be significantly higher, which all goes back to, that's not the intent.
No, I understand. I'm just, you know, if, when I see that no documentation was provided, it's like, why is that? Is it, is there something there that, whatever, right? So, I just wanted to know what, confirm that. And then, the, there was, yeah, so the inconsistencies with the SFPUC, is that more than metering? Is that part of the problem? You know, number two, under your financial review that the accountants pointed out some inconsistencies, because that involved projections for water billing rights or I, I just.
So, if I may?
Yes.
This actually talks about the water loss. What, what was going on was that the amount of billing that we're getting from SFPUC, these are obviously the wholesale supplier.
Yeah.
Compared to what we're billing to the customers, there are fluctuations that really didn't have specific undermining, you know, reasons. I mean, that, that was kind of what was discussed earlier in the evening.
Yeah, yeah, the fluctuations, yeah.
That's correct. So, you know, maybe a combination of a whole bunch of factors, including the, the water line breaks that were identified and then the escalation of the water line breaks.
Okay. And then, I just want to make a comment because of this drought, you know, going on. I think, you know, as you summarize here, we're part of the regional Basque Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, but each agency has a separate independent contract with San Francisco PUC, which, you know, in the next round, I think hopefully collectively we can, I, I think there's a good chance that we can impress upon SFPUC the need for them to allocate more funds. That's just my guess, that we'll have to do a lot of work on it. I think both the staff and the political leaders in the community. But I, I do want to mention that the drought allocation plan for East Palo Alto, in case of a drought, it, Basque collectively actually, you might say, give East Palo Alto a break in the sense that it would be much worse if, if it used the standard formula for everybody. But because in the county, there are two or three entities that you might say have an sort of unfair, unfairness built in because our community already is very conservation-minded, I would say. One, simply because when you're poor and moderate income, you don't waste things. And so, we don't waste a lot of water. We also don't have huge areas to irrigate or whatever. And so, but anyway, I, I just want to mention that because I, I do want to thank the entire Basque for having given us a little margin, understanding that we could not really sustain reductions. You know, what are you going to do? People not be able to wash their dishes or, or that? It's like, no. You know, certain basic things have to continue with that. So, I just want to put that in because we are part of a regional body that I think has up to now at least tried to be of assistance in some ways.
And Randy has, has pointed out to us, and I don't know how much the community's aware, the voluntary reduction applied to communities where there was a hundred gallons plus per day per, per household and, and East Palo Alto, we're looking at sixty-five gallons per day. So, technically, our, the voluntary reductions don't apply, but we still think it's appropriate that the community do their part and, and help along with, with everyone else. But clearly, there was also recognition in this voluntary compliance side that the, the communities that are using more per capita or more per household have the ability to conserve much easier than those that are using less already.
Yeah, I just, again, because there, you know, anytime there's emergencies in the forecast, I think people may understandably so get worried or panicked. I just want to at least assure the community from the regional perspective that it's not going to get to that point. Hopefully, it won't get to that point, but.
Hopefully.
The agreement right now is that it won't. That's the point. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my question is, under the accounting, the four findings, I'm really happy that American Water accepted and incorporated those changes. How do those changes or is there, will they make a difference to our rates, those, those findings, those changes and by you accepting those?
I mean, it, it can have some impact in the, in the long term. I mean, we have to, we still have to weigh everything out going down the road and see what the, the utility, the wholesaler, what their rates are and et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's, you know, we're trying to do our part to try to help the community. I mean, you'll see in a lot of stand, a lot of these reports that AWWA standards and, I mean, of a community this size, we would typically have fourteen people on staff, we have six. That's an all and an effort to try to help the community, to try to, and we do a lot of back, back behind the doors and which the community doesn't get charged. That's sort of our effort to try to help out where we can.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, I know we're, we're saying that we don't use as much water, but, and there's something that will go out to the residents, but if we could just share with the residents right now, just some of the things that they could do to conserve some water. What would you, what would you tell them?
One of the things is, you know, no one realizes, but a leaky toilet unfortunately can use hundreds of gallons a week and, and a day just by one drip at a time. You don't really notice it and it's sort of just one of those irritating things, but it, the amount if everyone in this community leaks just a little bit, the amount of water is huge.
Okay.
And, and just if you're going to turn on the shower, some people turn it on and walk away for fifteen minutes to get it really hot or something, that, that's another big thing. I mean, so there's, there's, you can stop by our office and we have lists that we're willing to give people of just ideas that, that just a little bit goes a long way because of the volume, right? If, if everybody in the community just saves five gallons a day, that's a big deal.
Yes.
You know, so.
Thank you. And then, I'm going to also just echo something that Councilmember Moody said. I, this, just this past year, I had an opportunity to speak to one of our seniors who had to decide between paying her water bill or getting her medication. So, whenever we're talking about water rates, the rates going up, we know it's inevitable, but it still affects the community. So, that's, that's my fear. Right now, do we want to, we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we do. The first speaker, David Chang, followed by Bob Gomez.
You are facing with a budget of one million dollars only. The problem is your making. Because we have our city worker working for the interest of the developer only. So, the developer should be shouldering the seven million dollars a budget. And now, you're loading all on the senior, the homeowner. Now, the water is a good way to screw this up. That's the problem. And you have to understand, you are responsible for the budget. It's not the eighty people that draw salary. They are not responsible for the budget. You are. If you don't tax those people that freeloading on us, you'll never solve the problem. You don't complain about Republican or Democrats. These people have to be responsible. They have to look at the problem. Is it fair to load it to the people like us? You cannot harm me because I use my water. When I push the toilet, I don't use, I use urine. I take a chair and at height of seven feet and pour urine down. I can clear the thing without using water. Every water I use three times. Nobody can tell me any other thing. I don't believe in, nobody say anything. I look at reality. Manager, I was very much hopeful that you can do something. Organize these people so that the load, no freeloading.
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Next speaker, Bob Gomez, followed by Michael Francois.
Bob Gomez, four oh two, East of Keith Street, beautiful East Palo Alto, thank God. My statement is more or less in a broad sense of water. And I was thinking about the problem we have here in water, but we always have this problem in water, east, I mean, west, let's say Mississippi River. And I was thinking, why can't we pipe in water from back there or from Washington State area? We can pipe in gas a thousand or two thousand miles away. And there's also been talk about picking up a big iceberg and put it in the middle of the desert so we can have water. So, something like that. I know it's, it's funny, I know, but it's worth thinking about it. And ever since the, you see, the Europeans came over here, they have put it up dams and this and that so that they be, control the water, but at the same time, they're hindering people from the western states like Arizona, New Mexico and so forth of getting water. And in doing so, they're also hindering the country, Mexico. They put the dams up there and then they, they don't have any water. Likewise, now over here in California, we don't have no water. I mean, we have water, but it shouldn't be done the way we're doing it now. No, it was just something that I was just thinking about, outfetched type of thought made about it. But something to think about. Why not bring water from other areas that have too much water? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Francois.
Mike Francois, two twenty-four, Gardena Way, East Palo Alto. Comments on water was, I agree with David Chang about, you know, we wasted a million dollars when he gave it to that company to do research and tell us how to bill our city. I think we should have built a water tank to have a second source of water supply. And John Doherty, I'm just going to comment on that thing. John Doherty said the pipes were bad. Yeah, the hole, I've seen pipes cut in half. The hole, the pipe is this big, but the hole in the middle is about that big through, you know, through corrosion. And also proven facts have proven the reason pipes are breaking because, not just because of age, because of chlorine, which is chlorine and ammonia mixed together. So, you want ammonia, it kills the poo poo smell, chlorine kills the bacteria, but that wears the pipes out, it wears the lead and breaks the seals and so forth. And that's documented. I got papers on it, it's documented by doctors who study this. So, it can't be denied. Also, we are the lowest. We pay the lowest in San Mateo County, we, as far as water rates are concerned. I don't think we should pay any more to American Water Works. I think they should just let it ride for a while because a lot of people have fixed incomes and you're not giving us any more service than you are giving us now. But your guys that work here in the city are, are great. As far as shortages are concerned, well, they're shipping water to LA. And are we in a drought? I don't know. They say that every time they want to raise the water rate and they never go down. There's never sunset on it. They go up, it's been going up since seventy-seven. I've been keeping an eye on it since seventy-seven. They never come down. And they say they need the money. The SP, the PUC is going to go up. The governor's talking about anybody going over a certain amount, he's going to fine them and go up. It's just a never-ending battle with this. This water thing is going to be bad. In fact, Hillary Clinton quoted, said this, "The next war will be over water." Next war. And nobody takes that serious. And now, they are having wars. They have food wars and water wars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all your speakers.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes.
I just want to, you know, thank Councilmember Abrika for bringing up that topic around the drought and our relationship with Basque. Randy, I would appreciate you and your team doing whatever you can to get those best practices about water, saving water out to the community. Maybe you can partner with our city manager and we can kind of add it to her comments.
We had a small section in the last newsletter that is just going out now. And I'll add something for the next notes and quotes.
That's correct. Okay, that's great. And anything you can do with the, with the elementary school districts, right, to create awareness amongst our, our education community around best practices and allow them to participate in this effort to save water. Be helpful. Thank you.
So, at this time, would either of you like to make a motion on this item?
I think it was just for recommendation.
So, are we just accepting it? Do we have to do anything? Any action?
No. There was no action requested.
So, for the community, we've decided again to continue items nine B, C, and D till our March fourth meeting. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.
Okay. Well done. March fourth. March 4th.